Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, March 22, 2022. Please rise for a moment of silence. We'll have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, one nation, in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson.
Here.
Carmody.
Here.
Fishline. Laughin.
Here.
Marone.
Here.
Tatta.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Zandry.
Here.
And Chairman Sirvoni.
Here.
Can I get a motion on the items remaining on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, P has been removed, J and O have been removed, P has been withdrawn, I'm sorry. So I motion that we approve or accept consent agenda items A through I and K through N.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing, none. Those items listed have passed. Just looking to see if there's any of the appointments that passed on consent here. Oh. Oh, well, you can come be sworn, but you were like two weeks ago, but come on up. Mr. Heilmann? Mr. Shewinski was reappointed to the ZBA a couple of weeks ago. Thank you for your service, Mr. Heilmann. All right, moving along to number four, items removed from the consent agenda. The first item removed was 3J. Can I get a motion on that, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move we reappoint Raymond Rice to the ZBA for a five-year term effective immediately and expiring January 8, 2027.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Question on the council. Mr. Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Needless to say, this is a disturbing situation, frankly, because I personally have known Mr. Rice for years. I know he's served the town in various capacities, on the town council, on the ZBA, and other community roles. And I have a veteran, I have ultimate, a lot of respect for him and what he's done in the town over the years. It's not comfortable for me to frankly oppose his reappointment. But I'm going to explain why I'm opposing it, and I'm, but I want to stress, I pulled this off the agenda so I could vote no. I'm not looking to lobby any of you, I'm not looking for an argument, I'm not looking to question Mr. Rice, I'm not looking to make this a big public spectacle. I simply am going to vote no. And the reason I'm going to vote no is because we have, it appears that over the last several months, the council has seemed to adopt or decided to establish a certain set of criteria, a new set of criteria for people being appointed to various boards and commissions. I know that some of you could potentially blame me for starting it. I will only say this. The situation where I opposed an appointment was a mayoral appointment. I again pulled it from the agenda so I could simply vote no. I had my own reasons. I had no intention for it to become a large event that evening. I had no expectation that the council would, the majority of the council would end up agreeing and denying that appointment. It wasn't my intention. I simply felt, based on my own feelings, that a certain person was not, I didn't feel comfortable reappointing that person, and I wanted to say no. Then we move on, and, but all, since then and all along, I've still stressed when the council is making appointments of our own, I've been asking that we still adhere to the traditions, the protocols, and the standards that we've typically applied over the years, and respecting the wishes of the town committees that make their appointments unless something outlandish is there. So we had an appointment for literally one of our own positions. Our town committee, as a Democratic town committee's request, was rejected, and that's fine. We then had, a couple of weeks ago, an appointment to another ZBA appointment, and that was where things sort of really sort of crystallized. Where now we're starting to look at someone's behavior, not in public, but in social media. However you want to define that. And it seems to me that this council decided, the majority of this council decided, that that was going to be the new standard, or at least a new standard, not the, but a new standard, that we could start considering. Wasn't comfortable with that. Not comfortable with it overall. But the majority of this council decided that was how we're going to do it. So two weeks later, we're faced with this potential reappointment, and I can't comfortably go along with it when some of the things I'm aware of, I've seen, been made aware of, are as concerning or more concerning than those that many of you chose to refer to when you denied Mr. Stork's appointment. So I'm simply going to oppose this appointment on those same grounds that the majority of this council has decided is now the standard we're going to apply. That's all. I have no interest in grilling anyone, questioning anyone, or trying to convince any of you to vote any certain way. I'm simply voting my own conscience on this, and that's why I pulled it from the agenda. So thank you very much.
Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you. So I've known Ray for over almost 20 years, since I started getting involved. He was one of the first people that invited me to sit down, hang out, relax, learn about everybody and the process in the town. And what I have learned over those last 20 years is that this gentleman's entire adult life has been public service. From the military to Wallingford, and whether that be to different elected terms or appointments to commissions and committees in town. I know Ray's humor can be a bit crude sometimes, and I'm sure he can or will or will not address that. But the man himself, his family, his loved ones, his friends that know him, and I can vouch for him, truly do love Wallingford, and truly does what he feels is best. And that is the type of person that I look for when we're making appointments. And somebody with more decades of experience than I've been alive in serving in town positions, I think has proven that he's capable of that.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. You know, I wasn't real thrilled with what happened with Mr. Stork, to be honest, because I think we're getting into the dangerous territory of judging other people's political speech. And I think that's kind of what we're doing here. I mean, I get that what happened to Mr. Stork was kind of unfair. And I get that we're sort of in an eye-for-an-eye kind of mode today, and so it's, you know, it's, you know, one side attacked the others, and now we're going to kind of go back in the other direction. This is a volunteer position. I've known Mr. Rice a long time. He is a good guy. I don't necessarily agree with all the things he says, but again, this is America, and I, you know, part of living in a free society is the ability to tolerate speech and things that I don't particularly care for. So this, like I said, this is a volunteer position. It's not like you're getting paid. This is someone that wants to volunteer his time for the town. I don't really understand what happened to Mr. Stork. I really don't understand what's happening to Mr. Rice. And I hope that we can, as a community, come to the understanding that, you know, free speech is free speech. And so if you don't like what someone has to say, you can tell them, you know, but I don't know that you need to go and get them in front of a public meeting. So that's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make a general point. This has nothing, the point that I'm about to make has nothing to do with Mr. Rice. Mr. Rice, and I spoke on the phone the other day, it was a very nice conversation. I've had numerous conversations with him over the years, some very pointed, and some very, very calm, like the other day. So the comments that I want to make going forward right this moment have to do with, although they'll start with social media and branch out from there. Eighty years ago, we didn't have social media. But people that served the town, people that were on the police force, people that were on the fire department, people that worked for the town, they were judged if they were downtown and they drank all evening, and if they misbehaved in a saloon, or they were out to eat and they overindulged themselves on food and left a lot of leftovers behind and didn't tip the waitress badly. That was social media back then. It was the center of town and the different things that you did. And these things do carry over. So there are consequences to these types of actions. Now, they shouldn't be all encompassing. What people do on their own, in private, yeah, that's true, and they do have a certain level of freedom of speech. But there's a level of even freedom of speech that may go beyond an acceptable standard to what people are willing to accept. So I look at my responsibility up here, not super granular on what somebody might say in one particular instance. I look at what somebody's general behavior is, and do they separate it? So the problem becomes whether or not people can take the time to say, I fully disagree with you, but I'm going to be professional about what I'm doing next. And that is what I look for. And also, how it reflects on the choices that we make up here, or how it may reflect on the administration, or the town in general. There's a responsibility to that as well. I would argue that there's a lot of focus being given on the this side or that side part of the conversation. I don't care anymore. I'm going to make choices up here that I be a believer in the best interest of the town. And people want to call me out for it, they can do so. I'm going to discharge what duty I can do to the best of my ability, and I might be dead wrong. But I'm going to make the choices that I feel are important to this town. And if I make enough incorrect choices, the electorate will replace me. And I'm okay with that, because they'll have their say. At the end of the day, we need to move this town forward. And we can only do that by making the best choices we can with the information that we have. And I believe that all of us up here try to do our best to do that. And I like to believe that everybody that's in an elected position, an appointed position, or a volunteer tries to do the same. And they only do it because they care about this town. Otherwise, why do it at all? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Carmody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. I'm going to echo much of what was already said. But I wanted to start by saying, I have known Mr. Rice for a long time. Not only, particularly because we have both served on the zoning board of appeals together. Not only do I think that he has served well in that capacity as the vice chair of the board, but I have enjoyed his camaraderie during our time together on the ZBA as well. And I know Ray to be very dedicated to our community, having served up here on the town council, serving at his church, and serving a number of our local veteran organizations as a veteran himself. So that makes tonight somewhat difficult for me. But we seem to be setting a standard up here where appointees to boards and commissions are being vetted at a new level, including through the review of their social media, as well as weighing their temperament and past actions. With that, we have been presented with copies of some online postings, and unfortunately, I would deem them to have crossed the line. And since we are setting a standard where we are going to hold our appointees to a higher degree, I cannot in good conscience vote for tonight's appointment. I wanted to explain my no vote before it was cast. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Mr. Rusik.
Good evening. Joe Rusik, Church Street, Wallingford, also the chairman of the zoning board of appeals. I've served with Ray eight plus years, been my vice chairman. Been very dedicated, comes to the meetings, he's always been courteous, respectful to anybody that's come in front and to everybody on the board. So I'm asking the town council tonight to reappoint Ray Rice to the zoning board of appeals. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parisi.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I guess I've known Ray longer than anybody in this room. I want to tell you, we had our good days and our bad days. But one thing I'll say, and I've always said it. He's a grandfather, a father, a decorated veteran, and a guy that if he gives you his words, it's insistent. Ray is the guy I would want in a foxhole with me. And he serves the town with that same attitude. And I think this would be embarrassing if I have to say for my 40 years on this council that a man of his quality and character can't get an appointment. Thank you.
Mr. Shewinski, name and address for the record, please.
Yes, hi. Lou Shewinski, Ridgeland Road. First off, thanks to everyone for serving. I feel like the last so many meetings that I've watched, there's a lot of just negativity and talk about what's wrong. And I think you guys do a great job. I think most of the people on our various commissions and boards do a great job. And I think the reality is that I think we need to remind ourselves that, you know, people are volunteering for these positions because they love Wallingford. And, you know, they're looking to do the right thing. And, you know, I've served with Ray on the zoning board of appeals for the past number of years. And I've known Ray to just want to do the best thing for Wallingford. Doesn't have anything to do with right, left, Democrat, Republican. It has everything to do with making the decision that's in the best interest of the town. So you guys, everybody's already said everything that I already feel, but that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Ross.
Ray Ross, 656 Center Street. I've known Ray for a number of years, not as many as Bob, but close to it. And I know him to be a gentleman. I know him to speak his mind. I know absolutely, he's on a board, he's in the best interests of the town, he has the best interests of the town at heart. And if it's anything less than a unanimous vote up there, it's a travesty.
Mr. O'Connell.
Riley O'Connell, 39 Edgerton Road. You know, I heard some talk tonight, and I think it sounds like, which is good, none of us are questioning Mr. Rice's character. I think we can condemn his statements online without bringing that into question, and we're all in agreement there. In some ways, I think he's just caught in the crossfire of a bigger issue that we have as a town council right now. And that's, you know, I heard talk tonight about, which I agree with, about an eye-for-an-eye kind of, this side of the aisle against the other, which is what it feels like right now. And if there's one thing that brings people from all sides of the aisle together, at least should, it's a common zero tolerance essentially for hypocrisy. And I think that's really what we're struggling with tonight, because ironically, we're dealing with an appointment to the exact same, nomination to the exact same board, the crux of the debate being over online behavior, social media behavior. The only difference potentially being the egregious of the behavior, and, you know, which party is putting forth the nomination, that's about it. But the reality is, there's only three people up there tonight as town counselors who can vote yes on this nomination without being, by definition, a complete hypocrite. And that's Counselors Marone, Carmody, and Testa. And I think, you know, I don't want to hearken back too much on what Counselor Marone said, but I think you're right. This is a problem. We did, and as Counselor Testa said, we had a process, we had a procedure that we followed for a very long time, and now, not just with the last meeting, I mean, it's been chipped away at for even this early in this term several times. But now I don't know where we go from here in terms of this spiraling, downward, eye-for-an-eye strategy. I know how we got here, but there's a lot of people here tonight to talk about a lot of big issues, or at least listen to a lot of big issues that the town is dealing with. And we have to keep talking about these appointments because we decided that, I guess, petty partisan politics is more important than addressing those bigger issues. So it's a tough decision, I guess, for the counselors to make, because unfortunately, I think we dug our own hole in this one by not honoring and not respecting the nominations of the town respective or relevant town party committees. Because, you know, while I can, I can at least respect the RTC's nomination, but now we're dealing with a hypocrisy that I don't know how we get out of. So thank you.
I saw one hand in the back and then another. Go ahead, come on forward. Name and address for the record, please.
Nancy Fabrizi, 923 Clintonville Road. The Wallingford Democratic Town Committee represents the Democratic voters of our town. By unanimous decision, we put forth Ed Stork to fill the position of alternate for zoning board of, for zoning board of appeals, better.
Yes.
That endorsement was rejected. The Republican Town Committee members want to reappoint Raymond Rice, whom I don't know. The basic argument against appointing Mr. Stork, which for me is the issue, was a question of his bias and his ability to make decisions without it. He was accused of basically being verbally abusive or unprofessional. I don't know specifically what that was about at all. Nobody on the town council offered any specifics to be disputed or debated. And Mr. Stork was simply accused and rejected. That's the way I see it. That's the way a lot of other people see it. We all agree the question of the ability to make an unbiased, fair, and well-informed decision is a key attribute in making decisions, and of the highest concern to those, you, who are charged with making an appointment. With that in mind, I'm sorry, I'm compelled to share these examples of most decidedly biased online behaviors, which are not well-informed, and to make matters worse, are lies. A meme was shared on November 20, 2020, by the person you want to appoint tonight to the zoning board. It showed three letters, BLM, followed by the text, Biden Loves Miners. It co-ops a very serious social movement by using the Black Lives Matter signature logo and spreads false and unseemly information. It's not funny. It's not unbiased. Would a black family who needs the board of appeals to make a decision for them feel they have a fair chance? Would they even feel comfortable coming forward? Previous to that, on October 27, 2020, Mr. Rice reposted something from another poster named Steve Davis, whoever he is. I won't read the text because you don't want to hear all the swearing. But I can say that in that text, mentally challenged people were referred to in a phrase that was outmoded and relegated to the annals of how ignorant we have been in the decades past. What really is unquestionably offensive is what follows the original poster's text. A photo of Joe Biden with the following superimposed over it. Joe Biden isn't stupid. He has dementia. People who vote for him are stupid. That's not funny. It's not unbiased. It's false and it's insulting. You called a voting bloc of the United States stupid. Essentially, you're calling me stupid. So I'm sorry, Mr. Rice posted these things. It makes me sad more than mad, and that's saying a lot. This raises the question about why you rejected Mr. Stork, due to the potential of his unbiased behavior because of what he posted online. And you stand poised to embrace Mr. Rice and not consider his online behavior and his ability to be biased or not. None of this appears to be very Democratic in practice or in spirit. I'm not the only person who feels this way. I want you to do a better job of being unbiased. Thank you for this opportunity to speak my mind.
Anyone else? Ms. Parisi.
Joan Ives Parisi, 23 East Main Street, Wallingford. I believe that this all began with Mr. Makepeace, when he was rejected not only by the Democrats but by the Republicans because of his behavior at the Celebrate Wallingford Downtown. Now, if we're going to reject him on that basis, then I don't know why the Democrats are upset that we rejected other people for the same reasons. However, the reasons for Mr. Stork, I believe, were because there were personal attacks on a sitting councilperson, not for things he posted on Facebook. Mr. Rice has posted things maybe that people are uncomfortable with. They weren't his posts. They were reposts. And yes, some people are very offended by them, and others maybe aren't. But that's Facebook. You either like it or you don't like it. But I think, to be fair, things have gotten a little out of control, and I think we ought to sit back and say, okay. Mr. Makepeace was a situation where he personally got in someone's face and was unkind. That's not acceptable. Mr. Stork attacked someone, a sitting councilman, on social media. That is not acceptable. Facebook postings are something of a different animal, and I don't think that that should hold as much criteria as these other situations that were personal. Thank you.
In the back.
Debbie Gross, Long Hill Road. I didn't speak at any of the things that have gone on, and I'm not interested in talking about any of those things. about any of those things. But what I will say is, I was here for all the meetings, and at the last one, you all talked about a higher level of standards and different things that you should take into consideration going forward, and was one of the reasons why you didn't appoint that person, why I haven't, I don't know him. So, I guess what I'm saying is, since you've raised that bar, rightfully so, that you need to keep that bar held that high and vote accordingly. Thank you.
Come on up. Mr. Amor.
Hello, Scott Amor, 13 Jenna Road. I wasn't going to speak, I clocked out for this. I'm in the middle of recording this meeting for you, but I just wanted to make a couple of points. First one is that we were commending Mr. Rice for all of his service for over the years, but there are two appointments that didn't get the chance to even start their service. So, I would hope that if they come back to you, you would revisit them and vote in the affirmative to appoint, add to the ZBA and any other appointments that the DTC puts forward, because those folks haven't even got a chance to serve their community. They were stopped right at the gate. Second of all, Mr. Rice is, you know, been around for as long as I've been here, and he's a constant fixture in this. And we get along and we're friends, we don't agree on many of those things that other people brought up, and I'd like to make sure that that kind of stuff doesn't get into this room, because it's already driving wedges between everybody on the council here. So, if you do choose to vote for him, I would hope that if we bring Mr. Stork back for an appointment, you would revisit that with the same attitude that you have this. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Karen Levac, 85 Sawmill Drive. I have been a Wallingford resident for 42 years. I have known Ray Rice for over 30 years. He was on the town council when I came before the council to be interviewed and then appointed to an unexpired term on the Board of Education in 1995. Mr. Rice has served as a town counselor, a member of the ZBA, on the Memorial Day Parade Committee, and as a member of the Veterans, Vietnam Veterans Monument Committee. These are just a few of the ways that he has served our community. I ask that you consider the many long years of dedicated service that Mr. Rice has provided. He always does his research, reviewing applications, touring the sites, and he comes to meetings prepared with pertinent questions for applicants. He also consults with town officials on issues concerning the applications. I respectfully request that you appoint Mr. Rice to another term on the ZBA. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. I believe you're Ms. Casa Grande, and you've removed your mask and confirmed. No, thank you. Name an address for the record, please.
Lucille Casa Grande, 15 Southview Drive.
If you could speak up.
I'm sorry. This appointment is not about Mr. Rice, it's not about Mr. Stork. This appointment is about each and every one of you. That's how I'm looking at it.
Nowhere near three minutes. And I'm not seeing any more hands, so I'm going to bring it back to the council to call a vote. Before I do, I'm just going to make some remarks. Last night, the Zoning Board of Appeals held its meeting and its election of officers. The Zoning Board of Appeals unanimously voted to reelect Mr. Rice as its vice chairman. I didn't get to vote on Mr. Makepeace's reappointment in December, I was not here. However, I didn't like that we were considering external conduct here with a candidate who had a history of performance in a position for which he had credentials outside of the appointment. Fast forward to two weeks ago, when Mr. Stork came up, and I asked him, what would he have done faced with the vote on Mr. Makepeace? And he told me that he would have considered the external, the external activity, and had strong opinions about it. And because of that, I thought I should hold him to his own standard. So, I am interested in stopping this and breaking this trend, but I guess that remains to be seen. With that, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson.
Yes.
Carmody.
No.
Laffin.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.
Tada.
Yes.
Testa.
No.
Zandry.
No.
Chairman Sivoni.
Yes. Motion passes. Onto item O. Oh. Mr. Rice, would you like to get sworn in?
Can I just say a couple of things? No? Okay.
Thank you for your service, Mr. Rice. Onto item 3O. Mr. Chairman, I move we approve, accept and approve the grants and transfers for the Board of Education as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we do have representatives from the board here, if you wouldn't mind coming up, please. If you would, please just remind us who you are for the record.
Dominic Marone, Business Manager.
Good evening, Danielle Malisi, Superintendent, Wallingford Public Schools.
Good evening, Tammy Ratcho, Board of Ed Chair.
All right, if you could give us a satellite view explanation of what's going on here, and then I think there are some questions.
So, what we are doing is we are presenting the grants that we've been awarded to the town council for appropriation, like we do every year. I mean, this is pretty much something we do anytime between February and, I guess, June. And so, we listed out the grants that, before you, to get them appropriated into your budget, or into your ledger, and our ledger.
So, these are all the grants you've applied for in, no?
We, I mean, there's timing as to when we've gotten grants, and we get grants throughout the year. So, some grants came last year, these grants have not come to you because we didn't know about them, or they weren't finalized until after we came to you, you know, last year, which I believe was-
I need you to get closer to the microphone.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So, the, these are the grants that we haven't brought before you. I mean, we bring them before you pretty much once a year, and depending on the timing of when they are approved, and in some cases, sort of the first, the first group are ones that have been approved, but the amount changed, so we took an estimate of the grant, the amount was different, so we're coming back to say, you know, we thought it was going to be $100, and now it's $25. So, we want, that's the column that says additional amount. The ones below that are new grants that we haven't brought before you, and then there's one that's 100% pass-through, which we are getting and giving to the Boys and Girls Club, or some, they're the subrecipients, so they're really utilizing that grant for a program.
Okay, and there's well over a dozen here. Are they all program-specific? Are they all dedicated to certain projects, to certain purposes?
They all have, yes, specific targets, whether it's free and reduced students, or special needs students, or specific things within special needs.
Thank you. Counselor Todd, this is your item.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you for coming tonight. I just wanted to, basically, you, you kind of went over that one page, but I just kind of want to focus on that, that first page with the different categories there. I could just ask a couple of questions on that. So, first of all, are these, do these grants go by school year or the town's fiscal year? Or how does that work?
So, these grants go by the year, so it's every year. The amount that they give us changes every year, because it's based on our student enrollment population, student need varying for each grant, because each grant serves for some, a different reason, based on the October 1st date from the year before. So, that's kind of what they use as the guide to the state when we go ahead and fill these out. Some of them are entitlement grants, some of them are competitive grants, so there's a little bit of a difference there. These are not all of our grants, these are just some of them, as they relate to the paperwork that Dominic submitted.
Okay. But most of these are based on the school year, the current school year?
Previous.
The previous school year?
Previous.
Okay.
Some are single, one-year grants, some are two, and one of them's a three-year.
Okay.
And one of them, the pastor grant is, it's going to be five years, but it's one year at a time, so you're going to see $200,000 for the next four years after this one.
Okay, great. Oh, that's okay.
Just to clarify, every October 1st, we have to give the state all of our demographic information. So, that's what they use for the following year. So, every year, this year's grants based on last year's October 1st.
Understood. All right, great, thank you. In that, the first paragraph there, it says the grants were awarded for an amount greater than the amount included in the original budget. So, and it looks like, if I look at that first spreadsheet there, I added those up, so it looks like $361,328 additional. So, that is extra money that the Board of Ed is receiving above what you were anticipating, so that'll be reflected in the current year's budget?
Not necessarily, like the, well, the VOAG additional grant, all right, the first one, that's really spent specifically for VOAG students, that's, and it can't supplant, most of these grants can't supplant, and that one particularly can't, also, we can't purchase consumable items. So, I guess, you know, some of these are coming in because of just additional needs that we identified, or some change in the demographics. But the VOAG one is very unique in that every, every year, the town, the town gets a grant, and if it's increased, the difference between the prior year and the current year is what goes towards education, and that's what you're seeing here. So, we just really estimate, whatever we got the year before, we just estimate it, and then whatever the state does, you know, it can vary significantly because of that.
Okay. So, for the VOAG, for example, so it looks like the original that you were anticipating was $45,000, and you ended up getting $222,000, so that reflects that there's potentially more enrollment for the VOAG program, where they gave you a higher amount for, for what reasons would they give you a higher amount? Because that's a pretty substantial, you know, increase.
The state determines how they're going to fund that grant. And the increase, however, in the formula, I don't know that particular one, we don't, we don't fill out a grant app for, the state does it, and whenever there's an increase, the amount goes to the program specifically, and it's 100% dedicated to the VOAG program. It's not like we could, say, buy a tractor and use it in VOAG and cut the lawn with it for the high school.
Yeah, that's going to be my next question. So, I'm assuming these, because they're all grants and the money's given for specific purposes, these can't be carried over. I mean, you, you have to use, you know, that, that money for the VOAG program, for example, even though it was much more than you anticipated, that will still go directly to the VOAG program.
Agreed. So, every grant we have, if you look at that first box up at the top.
Yep.
Each grant, the state will give us guidelines as to exactly how we can spend any of that money. It has to meet their criteria, what their, they may give us an allocated amount that may vary every year, but it is specific as to how we are allowed to spend that money and what we're allowed to spend it on. So, each individual grant, they'll give us something different for that.
Okay. So, if there were money left over at the end of the fiscal year, like, let's say the VOAG, for example, just because that's the top one, let's say you only spent $100,000 of the grant at the end of the fiscal year, would that, would the remainder of that just carry over into your next year's budget, because you have to use it for a specific purpose?
It depends on the grant. Some grants have to be spent. So, if it would go, if it wasn't spent, it would have to go, it would go back to the state if it, if the grant was, okay, but, and some of them are, some of them are multi-year. The IDEA grant, the larger IDEA grant, that's a two-year grant.
Okay, so then that money, whatever is unspent, you just carry over into the next year, and we'll see that reflected in your budget, I would assume, when you go over the grants. Perfect, okay. The other thing I just wanted to point out, in the second block, so it says the following reimbursement grants are new awards to the Wallingford Public School System, and if I'm looking at this right, they total over $5 million. So, you got an extra $5 million in grants this year? I mean-
So, these are the, I'll call them the COVID grants. So, these are all of the grants that the state has awarded us based on COVID. So, again, these are very time-specific. You'll see the first one goes until 2024, so each of them have a different end time, which means we have to spend the money within that timeframe. Again, all of these are specific to exactly what they tell us we can spend that money on.
Right, okay.
You know, I'm happy to go through and give you an idea what we've spent them on, and which is what we will include in discussion when we do our-
Yeah, no, that's fine for-
Our presentation at the end of April. But each one of these, they'll give us a specific way that we can spend it. Typically, it's on staffing, instructional materials, remediation services for our students, all student-centered remediation acceleration. We've done a lot of credit recovery at our high schools last year, any summer programs we did last summer, so all things to support based on the effects of COVID. So, things that we can continue. Just to make note, that first grant, we can revise that every six months. So, the state will ask us to revise our, like, at the beginning of the school year, we had to have a safety plan, an opening plan for the school. Every six months, we can revise how we allocate that based on student need, and we have to also continue to provide them with what our plan looks like for mitigating strategies through COVID.
Thank you. Yeah, that makes sense that that's the COVID money, because I was wondering why, how we got an extra $5 million, which is great, but I was wondering how that happened. The ones that say ARP are, that's ARPA money, the lines that all say ARP. Okay, so you got your own ARPA money, the town got its own, okay. Yeah, you explained the $200,000 at the bottom. Yeah, I think, I think that's pretty much it for me, I just wanted to, oh, I guess one more question, too. So, a lot of these grants, I know, you know, school systems, like you said, the state kind of, I don't want to say automatically gives them, but it's kind of expected. But do you also, is, the Board of Ed, I mean, I think you do a great job with receiving grants, and we get a lot of, you know, that saves the taxpayers a lot of money, and I know every year when I look at the budget, you're really good at getting grants, which I think we all appreciate, but are a lot of these, or any of these, I guess, do you have a specific grant writer, or do you have, how do you handle, you know, finding grants and applying for them? Is it by department, or how do you handle all that?
Can I share a little bit on that? So, Grants 101, these grants are a little bit of everything. There's some grants that are actually competitive, there's a couple on the list that we did submit competitive applications for, going against other districts, and the pot of money gets divided by the state, and we did get some of those awards. There's also grants in here that are based on an entitlement. The formulas do get complicated, there's different factors that go in there, they look at the median income for the district, they look at how many free and reduced lunch students there are for a district. It's a behind-the-scenes kind of formula, I could share the spreadsheet with you, Mrs. Todd, if you'd like it. So, those are more of the entitlement grants. There's also grants, and this is important, because when you look at the grants and you think about the ways that we get them, there are need-based grants here. And if we get a grant based on the need of the population in our district, that doesn't mean that we get 100% of the need met. And as a district with our demographics changing over the past decade-plus, we are qualifying for more need-based grants than we have previously. So, on the front end, it may look like, wow, the Board of Ed's getting all this money, it's saving taxpayers, but in reality, there's a lot more need there, and we're not getting all of the need through these grants satisfied. So, there's different grants for different purposes. We do our best to try to apply- We do our best to try to apply for the competitive grants. There are some we get just because of the formula that's there. And when they calculate it out, this is what we're getting. There are some that we get that the formula's there, and they don't even fund it at 100%. Our ECS grant is not even funded at 100%. It was 70, now it's 80. It'd be great if they'd at least fund that at 100%. So, yeah, it looks great that there's $5 million here in grants, but they're all made up from different things. And I just don't want it to be deceiving that we got this money because there's a lot more need out there. And I'm not just talking from an education standpoint. I mean, there's families who are struggling with, and you know it, it's the housing, it's the food insecurity, there's other issues there, too.
I just also want to add that we only come when we get more. So, there are grants that we don't get. We get less, and we don't come and adjust it down here. So, the excess cost or ECS grant, we're probably $300,000 less than we had, you know, budgeted. But we're not, you know, we didn't put in here as an adjustment.
Yeah, that's true, too, because we wouldn't need to approve anything, yeah.
But, so, you know, it cuts both ways.
Sure, yeah.
Hopefully, you keep, you know, hopefully, we're bringing more here than we're not.
Yeah, hopefully. Yeah, I think, so I guess, just, just to touch back on the grants, is that, the competitive grants, I should say, is that something that we, you have a specific grant writer that looks for those? Or is it by departments? Do, like, department heads kind of know, do different...
So, I have to say that we have a fabulous central office team. And so, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, Carrie Latour, and our Assistant Superintendent for Special Education, Amy Turner, they really are the ones that write all of the grants. And, you know, we get at, we'll know from the state because they give us notification of what grants are out there that were, you know, applicable to be able for us to apply for. But I have to say, both of those ladies work very hard at, you know, sitting down with all of us as a team and deciding what grants are we going to apply for. They may do a lot of the legwork, but we all sit as a team to decide what are our needs. And if we get it, how are we going to allocate this money? And what are we going to do with it? You know, we meet every week to discuss all of it, and that's a big piece of it for us. And then Dominic handles all of the money piece of it and making sure that we're on track with what we're doing. But it is really a group process. It's a tremendous amount of work. But to your point, it does yield a lot of things that especially now, we're able to provide to our students, which is the most important piece moving forward.
Yeah, that's great. I think we, you know, I certainly appreciate, you know, the competitive grants, and, you know, we talk about it on the general government side sometimes, too, and that, that certainly helps. So, thank you for that. Those are all my questions. Thank you very much. This really helped clear things up, so I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to pick on my pet peeve with you folks. Sorry. But I don't see anything in here for transportation. And I know that, you know, as you've explained very well, so I appreciate that, that, you know, these are grants that are very specific. But the reason I'm going to take the opportunity to bring up transportation again is echoing on some of what you've said tonight. Part of, part of the problem, at least, that's being communicated to me from the parents that do talk to me, because not all of them do, is that they are having their own struggles themselves, housing, food. And I think a lot of this ends up back on you guys because they end up falling into a demographic as they don't, as they are unable to keep working, as they call out sick. And, and portions of this are, are going back to this transportation piece that I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring back up. I bring my kids to school because I'm fortunate enough to work a job where I work from home now, and I'm two minutes around the corner. And I watch the varying degrees of traffic going in and out of DAG specifically. Now, when I stop and talk to the parents, usually not there because it's too busy to do so there, but I run into them later, it's always the same song. It's, the buses are backed up, they double, they double-schedule the bus. And that hasn't happened recently in the past few weeks. I want to be fair about my criticism about it. But these, these issues with transportation, they multiply against the families. We're going to be talking about ARPA later, and that was one of my big pieces that I brought forward about, I want to be able to use this money to alleviate some of the pressures on these families. So, as you guys go into budgets, as maybe other grants are available to maybe apply towards transportation, I want to try to find some solutions to the problems that are going. And I, I understand this is not unique to Wallingford, and I understand it's not unique to Durham School Services. It's all the bus companies. But there's got to be a remedy somewhere. And I don't know exactly what it could be. It's not just throw some more money at the problem, but there's got to be some other avenue. We have to think creatively about this. When buses are late in the morning, parents have to go to the school. They're late for work. If they're late enough times, they don't get scheduled for their part-time shifts, and ultimately, their jobs are at risk. In the afternoons, when the, the older kids are coming home, if there's even the benefit of older kids, if their bus is late, then the elementary school children beat their older siblings home. This is a big problem for those families as well. I, I under, I know you're aware of this. I'm not bringing up something new. But I'm, I'm trying to communicate to you that I'm still getting them. I'm sure they're getting calls to you guys. I'm still getting them. And so, I still have this concern. And I want us to think about what we can do. If it's grants, awesome. If it's, if we've got to put more money in the budget, that's, we'll have to address that. If it's, if it's an issue of how can we set up the agreements with the bus company? So, there's, there's actual punitiveness for them not making these runs. I don't know what the answers are. But, but what I'm trying to articulate, and hopefully, I'm doing, doing it well enough, is this is impacting the families, and I want to find a way to address it.
I agree with you, Mr. Zandry. I can attest that Mrs. Blizzi and Mr. Barone, who is in charge of transportation, deal with this on a daily basis. And we are addressing it, and that's really all I can say at this moment. But I thank you for your ongoing support.
I would, I agree that, you know, we are really working on it. We are aware of it. It's a source of frustration for all of us. And I'd also say, I have not seen a lot of grants that I think would help us. A lot of the grants seem to be more towards the, you know, the electric vehicles and all. It's that type of a thing. But we, you know, we are working on it, and, you know, we hope it's getting a little bit better. And we're going to keep moving it.
That's all, that's all we can ask for. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I see no more hands up here. Any members of the public wish to speak, ask questions? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmody?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Cervoni?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you for your time. Onto item five, the public question-and-answer period. I see your hand, Mr. Walworth. Name an address for the record, please.
John Walworth, Laurelwood Drive. And I, my name was brought up two weeks ago at this council meeting. So, I really want to ask this question. Having dedicated literally hundreds of hours to this town in various capacities, why me? Mr. Fishbine took the opportunity to make the inquiry on who might be a paid consultant for the Economic Development Commission in the development of a proposal for the railroad station. And he attacked this tiny consultant, John Walworth, who just happens to have, be a respected volunteer on dozens of town projects, beginning with Wallingford's Terson Tenny, and continuing to this very day. You have to excuse me, I just spent eight hours interviewing consultants on the police department project, and I was the only volunteer in the room. Everybody else was paid. During the ensuing 50 years volunteering for the soccer league, the Chamber of Commerce, Recreation Commission, Tool Pool Projects, and both Gaylord Hospital and Mid-State Medical Center boards, my ethics have never been questioned, nor complaints raised, nor innuendos made until this rumor on March 8th. So, what would be the motives here? No others were named, no other consultants questioned above potential inappropriities. The fact that I was already an active volunteer, covered under the code of ethics, would have been the first question. Or perhaps Mr. Fishbine could have picked up the phone and called Tim Ryan, called the mayor, called Purchasing, or even me. But that would not have had the audience, nor the opportunity to tag-team with a resident to insinuate negatives, negativity at my expense. I was hurt deeply, to be quite factual. And perhaps in doing so, also the current and future volunteers as well. I have committed several hundred hours on the original pool, school projects totaling $100 million, meeting every...
The recording's not picking you up. If you could stay on the mic, please. Thank you.
On two school rounds of projects, covering 11 schools and $100 million meeting every two weeks for five years. And the police station. You know, interestingly enough, it was appropriate for the town council and administration then to accept my months and months of volunteer work to write the request for proposals then and judge the proposals. But all of a sudden, as a paid consultant, making a measly pittance of a sum, it was inappropriate. How did I gain the experience to author those and then to be invited by EDC to work on the RFP for the railroad station? Because I had written several hundred proposals or requests for proposals for engineering firms, builders, institutions, and government, then to hypothesize in front of a televised council meeting some baseless impropriety is painful and insulting. And insu, insu, insinuation, by the way, that respected corporation counsel Janice Small subsequently referred to as absurd. I thank you for the opportunity to acquaint you with the full impact that this ill-considered and thoughtless comments had on me personally, and quite possibly on those who might even be considering volunteering in the future. He had a camera. I have this bottle of NXIVM to protect my ulcer. My doctor told me to double the dosage since that last meeting. I offer a bio of my professional and volunteer career to encourage respect and to censure such ridiculous accusations in the future. Thank you.
Anyone else? Is that you, Ms. Gross?
Debbie Gross, Long Hill Road. I have a question for the mayor, if I could. Just looking for an update on the Woodding Kaplan bid process, please.
I believe I stated at the last meeting, it's supposed to be published this month and should be open next month.
Okay. Because I thought you said by the beginning of April, you'll have all the bids in and decided. Does that still hold true?
I don't know if I said the beginning of April, but I know it's April, they're supposed to have bids returned and be able to open them.
Has, it hasn't gone out yet, then? Because we're almost at the end of March.
I don't know for a fact the status of it right now. That's what I was told.
Okay. Because it'd be good to know that, because I'm anxious to see that project get done. As well as adding to that project any other amenities that would help with the community as far as electric charging stations and maybe some greenery and other things, it's a perfect opportunity to incorporate all that in in one project. Thank you.
Fran LaFrance, Proscino, 14 Jackson Avenue. I'm very disappointed tonight. I see some serious hypocrisy. One thing that has not been made very, very clear, there was absolutely not one shred of evidence against Ed Stork. However, tonight's person, there was reams, reams. But that standard was not applied across the board. It was very seriously Republican versus Democrat. I am so disappointed in this town council, with the exception of one or two people who put the situation up for a vote and not their personal or political interests. It's hypocrisy, outrageous hypocrisy. And to even equate what Mr. Makepeace did, that's crazy. That man verbally assaulted someone in person. And as was said recently, what you do in public when you are an elected official or a representative of your town, your neighborhood, your country, it's important that you're held to a higher standard. And you put what's right up for vote and not what you want to do to make your party happy or your friends. Not one shred of evidence against Mr. Stork, not one. And reams against the other individual. How do you, in your mind, balance that? How do you sleep at night? Thank you.
Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. A few questions. First one is for the, well, it's not Mr. Boz, Mr. Senna, through the chair.
Mr. Senna?
It's through, it's on the pension commission, or the pension. Just wondering how the money's, the stock portion of the portfolio is invested?
It's invested in four investment funds.
Are they active or in, are they passive or active?
Active.
Okay. That brings me to something that I think that I've been talking about for 10, 15 years now. If I can open it, let's see here. There was an article yesterday. Boy, I can't even open it. I don't know why. And it, what it says is that if you're invested in funds, if you're going to beat the market 80% of the time, you go passive. And this is proven history-wide, year after year after year. You have hundreds of millions of dollars invested, not just you. I mean, it's the Pension Commission. And the council and the mayor oversee this, especially the mayor because those are his appointments. And it's, you know, you say if it's 1% or 2%, it's not much money. It's, it's millions of dollars a year on the money that we have, meaning the town. And this is all readily available. I mean, if you're buying individual stocks, it's a little different. But if you're in mutual funds, which I think the majority are, I haven't been to a pension meeting in a while, and they don't post online what they're invested in like other towns do. But I do remember they were in emerging markets, and they were in small cap, large cap. But they weren't in, they were in active funds. There were some passive. So, I would hope, the council has mentioned over the years, that they would get the Pension Fund Commission in front of the council to talk to them. It's been years. This is a large item in the budget. How many millions of dollars do we put in per year approximately? Eight?
Eight, nine, whatever the actuaries tell us to.
Right. So, the performance affects how much money the town of Wallingford has to put into these funds. If it was better return, proven return, because you're going to stay, you're going to stay in the market. It's the only way to beat inflation. It would be to become passive. And I just would hope that the council would, you can go online and look this up. You can see it. Go CNBC, go to Fortune, go to Forbes, go to Wall Street Journal. Any of them will tell you, this is the way to go. And that's why the largest mutual funds are passive funds. And so, I would hope that the council will take up some of this and do something with it in the future for the citizens of Wallingford. Thank you.
Mr. Gross is yielding. Does somebody else want to come up? Mr. Shewinski?
Lou Shewinski, Ridgeland Road. Hearing someone speak about the pension and whatnot, first, I'll say, I work in this, in that industry. So, nothing I say should be used as investment advice. And to some degree, that what was just being... And to some degree, that what was just being discussed is correct. However, much of the literature that's out there revolves around retail investors, not necessarily institutional money. With that said, there are a number of actively managed funds that do beat the market. It's just a matter of picking the right funds. You also have to consider the source and also that a lot of these larger firms that keep driving down costs also have a product to sell. So, you know, I think at the end of the day, I think, you know, it's certainly something that should be looked at, but to just, we can't paint a broad brush and just say that one way is better than the other, because, you know, frankly, it's just, it's not true. So, thank you.
Mr. Gross, you're back.
Yeah, never left. Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Not going to get in a match, but you can, you can look up the statistics yourself and see what the real numbers are. Has the town hired a treasurer yet?
Yes, started March 10th.
Excellent. So, oh, it just started. Perfect. All right. I know you're going to be talking about ARPA money tonight, and I have a couple, just because you're going to be talking about it. We know that the non-profits and the businesses have been here, and they're going to be here again tonight, as we can see. But who's speaking for the citizens of Wallingford and who's speaking for the children and the disabled in Wallingford? And I know that the non-profits are going to say they're speaking for them, but I'm talking about, in this own room here, and I remember going back years ago, if you're handicapped, you can't access this room. It's not ADA accessible. And it should be. Their bathrooms are not ADA accessible in this building, and they should be. So just some places for your money. You know what other towns have done with some of the money that's out there. I'll get into that when they do that, talk about it. But I would just hope that you would think about what the groups that haven't spoken about, haven't been here, haven't had your ear, haven't talked to you outside of here in small groups, you will think of all the citizens of Wallingford, all forty-seven thousand of them. The pickleball, this is to the mayor, the pickleball court, that went out to bid. It came back, the bids? I'm just, I thought I read something that the bids were higher than the, that went out for bid.
Yes, the bids came back. They were higher than the money that was appropriated.
But you're going to, you're going ahead with them?
That was on the agenda tonight.
Oh, it's on the agenda? Didn't even see it on there.
It was on the consent agenda.
Okay, so, I didn't even read it. So you approved the money. Okay. Just, when the parking lots come back, because the parking lots are going to be nowhere near their numbers now, as the pickleball courts weren't, just remember what you approved it this year and you wanted to wait, that hopefully you will do the same thing for the parking lots that you did there. There was one other thing, and I forgot what it was. So I'm going to concede. That's it. Oh, the, there was an incident, this goes to you, the mayor and the police department. There was an incident in Wallingford last week. There was a small chemical spill contained, but the area was shut down. I have, I volunteer in that area. And the next morning, I was supposed to meet some workers there, and they called me before they came, because they had a trip to get there. They wanted to make sure that the roads were open, because they saw that the roads were closed. I had no idea, and I wasn't going to waste my time going down there. So I called, and I got patched to, to the fire department, who didn't know, who then got back in contact with me that they were open. This all goes to the point, Mr. Mayor, that if we had a Facebook page, these are things, when something gets closed like that and we didn't have access to our area. When it's open, you mark that it's closed and open, all with hitting a button. I know that Facebook's not your thing or Instagram, but this is a way that you communicate in today's world, instead of me calling and getting passed through the fire department and wasting their time to find out if something was done. Because we are on their property that, well, they're on our property whatever way, we share property together. And so our area was shut down that night. Thank you.
Not a waste of their time. That's why they're there, and that's why they communicate. One of the last snowstorms, West Haven had an episode where a, a posting on, on one of the social media pages indicated that West Haven would not be plowing the streets, caused a big uproar. And of course, it was a false posting, it made to look like it was West Haven, so the mayor got involved and everyone had to, oh, oh, no, 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 we're plowing the streets. That's what I'm talking about. Just call a department and you'll get a direct answer, and you can trust what you're being told.
It took, and I'm not, the fire department's very nice in town here, they're great service to the town of Wallingford, but it took thirty minutes to get an answer. And what you're saying there, Mr. Mayor, anybody could post right now on Facebook and say it's the Wallingford forum, or whatever you want to call it, and they could say the streets aren't being plowed. They could do that right now, and then people would do the same thing. So whether we have a presence or don't have a presence, people could still do that. Having a presence would help. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just want to state that when everyone knows to go to the Wallingford webpage to get a correct answer, we're all best off. You don't have to look around, you know where to find the answer.
It wasn't there, Mr. Mayor. That's, we did go to the webpage, it wasn't there.
The pickleball item was three I. I see no other hands, therefore I will close the public question and answer period and move on to item six.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agreement for the town to purchase three East Dayton Hill Road.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Mayor, what's going on?
Well, tonight, we have the contract to approve the purchase of three East Dayton Hill Road. As you're aware, that is a piece of property very close to, it was, it's on Woodhouse Avenue, Route 150, and where it takes a sharp ninety-degree turn. It's property that is right at the intersection of East Dayton Hill and Woodhouse, right next to the, one of the entrances to Tyler Mill. So this, by purchase of the property, we will be able to put some public parking there. Right now, it's lacking. People have to park in front of the, the gates which close off the Tyler Mill Road at that location. This would allow parking that's more convenient and safe, and it will also be, allow us to have a much more attractive entryway to, to the Tyler Mill Preserve. Yes, and Law Department's here.
Of the sixty-five thousand, sixty thousand is the purchase price, five thousand is for environmental study, title work, et cetera.
So we just moved the contract, that's the sixty thousand dollar purchase price. The next item, six B, would approve the sixty-five thousand dollar allocation.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Council Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think my comments can apply to probably both parts of this, so I guess I'll just say them now. I think everyone knows I'm very supportive of Tyler Mill. I know we've had some lively discussions about Tyler Mill, and, you know, I'd like to see us maybe spend some of the ARPA money for some upgrades there. This expenditure, however, I, I feel that it's just an unnecessary expense to the town. You know, I think we can, if we need parking there, it's a good spot, you know, for, for entry into Tyler Mill, but I think we can just do that with land that we already have on the other side. So I just don't see this as a necessary expense. I think, you know, we, we own over a thousand acres, I believe, and I don't see why we can't do a small parking lot on land that we already own and save the town sixty-five thousand dollars. So I do not think I will be supporting this this evening. Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions or comments from the public? Thank you. Your name and address for the record, please.
David Lee, Two Signal Hill, which is at the bottom of where you're talking about. I think it is something that would be a great improvement to the area. Some days, there's one car there, two cars, they're climbing over the wall to get in. And I think the other thing you might pursue is to get the state of Connecticut to clean up their part, because I think part of the road is on state property. I've lived there sixty years, so I know what it's like.
Thank you. I used to live near there, I did for thirteen years and used the park a lot. And I have observed cars parking up against the gate. I think it's a safety issue, quite frankly, and I think this is a small price to pay to improve access to the park for people.
The original sales price for that lot was seven thousand dollars. We won't ask you how long ago that was. All right, Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmody?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes. Excuse me, yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Cervone?
Yes. Motion passes. On to six B.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve a transfer in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars from Capenanon Fund Number Three Oh One to Capenanon Land Purchase Fund Number Three Oh One.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further comment from the council? Any further comment from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmody?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Cervone?
Yes. Motion passes onward and upward. Item seven, report from the council's Subcommittee on ARPA for discussion and possible action. Mr. Vice Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you for including us on the agenda. At the, the Subcommittee met last week, we successfully recorded and posted the video this time. There were about seventy individuals at one, at any given time that joined the meeting, and the largest discussion was about nonprofits. And then we also talked about the business communities as well and the need. I will let any of the Subcommittee members jump in. If I'm missing anything, I'm trying to keep this brief. But in the next meeting, which will be Tuesday, a week from tonight, we are hoping to be reviewing and approving final application drafts for the nonprofits and businesses and possibly individuals. We also voted three to two, after a discussion where a majority felt it was best to start to establish some sort of communicated prioritization in how the funds would be distributed, there was a vote, three to two, to recommend a prioritization of forty percent of the funds to businesses, thirty percent to nonprofits and individuals, with the remaining thirty percent unallocated at the given, at this given time, and to be adjusted later on, depending on how the requests and applications came in. That individual portion being included in the nonprofits was looked at as the sort of personal charitable area where very likely youth and social services, along with nonprofits, would be, we would recommend, I don't mean to say that we are doing any of this, it's of course the full council's decision. We'd be looking for those organizations to assist in allocating, since they have such a good handle on what is already going on in the community.
Councilor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Subcommittee Chairman?
I'm sorry, I was in the way.
Thank you, Darrell, and my other brother Darrell. That's, that's pretty much, that's a good report on what's been going on. We have, we've had good discussions. We've had three meetings where we're, we're in agreement on a lot of things. I think one of the, kind of one of the sticking points is, do we set certain amounts now or do we wait until the application process plays out and we see actual figures of expressions of need, if you will? And, you know, we've been, we're not so much apart even on that. My position's been, you know, send them out, send them out, so we can get that going and we, and let's get, find out what the needs are. But at the same time, I did want us setting up some priorities. Those percentages that we even voted on, when I, I proposed some, it's with the intention that they're, they're flexible. You know, it's just, it's something that we're setting out as a general guideline, so that we can indicate to the community, we have our eyes on these three different pools, if you will. We're not ignoring any one group or idea. So there's a lot of people that want to see municipal projects, they feel very strongly about that. There are a lot of people that want to see us do all we can to make sure we take care of all the people we can through our social service agencies. There are many, there are some, but of course, our EDC, who has been stressing strongly, you know, we've got to start with the business community. Although, in fairness, they've said the business community and the nonprofits, and so on and so forth. But we have to weigh that, we have to weigh that and decide how we want to handle it. We've been operating under the assumption that we have some time, let's get the applications out, let's get information in, but we'll have time to make these decisions, and we can make adjustments. So that's where we've been, but we, we received a memo yesterday that, I wish I could call a wrench in the gear, but it's, it's, it's quite a bit worse than that, in my opinion. Because, and it's been explained to me in such a way that I'm very concerned. I know we've talked about, Councilor Tada has brought it up on multiple occasions, referring it to the standard deduction, and I've been trying to wrap my head around what exactly does that mean? And it was finally, I finally, it was finally explained to me in this way. We have to make a decision by the third week of April, that's three weeks, four weeks from now. We have to make a decision on how much of this money is going to be spent on municipal projects. And that's, there's no going back from that. In other words, if we say five million, it's five million. It can't be more, it can't be less. So we can't do as I was hoping, let's set aside thirty percent for now as a, as a floating amount, let's start looking at projects. And if we don't come up with enough projects to use it all, so be it. Or if we decide that we've come up short on something that we've established as a priority, then we can do less municipal and we'll shift more money back into the social services, for example. Or if, lo and behold, the business community doesn't need forty percent, they need twenty-five, and the social service groups and the individuals who are in the most dire need in the community need forty-five percent and not thirty percent, we can shift it, shift it, shift it, and then what's still not used can be trickled down into the municipal pool. Well, it can't, if we've already set a dollar amount for the municipal. Well, it can't if we've already set a dollar amount for the municipal pool. I don't know if I'm the only one who didn't quite get this, but I'm alarmed and I'm frankly very upset because this takes me back to where I was six months ago, 12 months ago, when I said, "The administration's going forward this in a way that is going to have us pigeonholed in what we can do." And if we are, in fact, if my understanding is correct, as it's been explained to me by our legal department, that we have to make the commitment of an amount of money to be spent on municipal projects by April 23rd is true, we haven't been operating with that understanding. And we've been spinning our wheels again. We've been getting a lot done, but now we have to stop everything. We have to make this decision. And to be put in a position to have to make that decision within three weeks, when we haven't even talked about municipal projects, is unacceptable to me. I'm infuriated that now I find myself in this position. Everybody in this room who has an interest in this, who's been working with us, who's expressed their opinions to us brilliantly and ferociously and honestly, is at risk of being of a great disservice because we can't commit. Or we're going to have to commit something that may or may not impact what we can do for everyone else. I just, I don't understand how it got here. Now, if someone says to me, "We just found this out last month," all right, there's Testa overreacting again. I sense that's not the case, but I, you know, I've done it before. So I want an answer to this, and I want to know what we're going to do about it, and we better damn well start talking about it tonight.
Attorney Farrell's on the edge of his seat. Fire away, sir.
Counselman Testa did ask me the question just before the commencement of the meeting. And Attorney Small, the mayor and I spoke, actually after the meeting started, and we're going to be more specific of what would qualify for the set aside. So we'll have something tomorrow. There is some disagreement as to what would qualify under that, once you set the figure. I'm sorry, I don't think I misled you, but...
No, you did not.
You know, it may not be just municipal projects. Other things may qualify under the designation of the set aside, but the law department will try to be more specific on that tomorrow.
What, such as? When you say other things, such as, would they, could they fall under the category of social service agencies, individual relief, business relief?
I think that that's an argument that has to be clarified, yes, it could.
So what's the point of a set aside? If then, it's all wide open anyway?
That's the issue, Counselman, yes.
Okay.
I have a more limited opinion of what would qualify than Attorney Small does. We need to iron that out tomorrow.
So, I know we're talking about it our next Subcommittee meeting, but this is serious.
So, if I may, how intractable is that set aside decision? Is that, once we say we commit $4 million to it, is that...
I don't think you can reverse it once you set the figure. You can't add to it either, but you can't subtract from it. So once you set it aside, you have to use it for what would qualify under that. But the issue of what qualifies needs to be clarified.
And you'll have an answer for us tomorrow?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, Counselor Tatta?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not, I don't even, I'm not really sure where to start. I don't think I've ever been as frustrated as I am right now, since I've been on the council. I said this at meetings. I, I mean, I brought this up. I said, "We have to decide this." I asked about the standard allowance. I said that we need to decide this. I asked the comptroller, I believe, four times now what the revenue loss was, and as soon as this agenda item came up, he had to leave for some reason. I still don't have the answer. We don't know what this, what our revenue loss was, and I don't know if the town is planning on figuring that out or not. But if they're not, then we need to take the $10 million. But if they are, then we need to know that number, and we need to know it soon. And I believe I said at our last Subcommittee meeting, Subcommittee meeting, that the deadline was April 30th, that once we make this decision, we cannot go back. I believe I said all of this. So I'm not, I'm not sure why all of this is such a surprise, except for that, I guess what I'm saying at the Subcommittee meetings is just not being heard. And maybe that's on me, maybe I need to be clear. You know, that, I don't, I don't know if the mayor or the law department know, are we calculating the revenue loss or are we not calculating that?
There has been no attention to that for the reason that it's been estimated it's under $2 million. So if we designate that as the amount, we can't take more than that later on. I mean, we'd be crazy to go with that if we can actually be eligible to receive a much larger amount. So I certainly couldn't recommend that, you know, it's the revenue loss. It's bound to be a fairly minimal amount of money compared to the broadening of this issue, which, as you know, occurred fairly late in the game, but broadening to, up to $10 million. My understanding is, if you choose the lower amount, you can't then add to it later on. And why would we want to box ourselves in with a very low amount?
Yeah, I 100% agree with you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm glad to hear that, that at least we have an idea that it's below $2 million, so now we can make an educated decision. So, you know, my, my understanding of this $10 million and the revenue loss and the reason why we needed to figure this out, like the mayor said, if the $10 million, if you take the standard allowance of the $10 million, you basically can use that $10 million pretty, on pretty much anything. There's a few small, I think you can't put it towards a pension, you can't use it to pay down debt, but if you use your revenue loss, that's the portion that is, you know, very kind of unlimited as to how you use it. So if our revenue loss is only $2 million, or that's the estimate, you know, it kind of, it makes what we can do with unlimited funds, you know, much, much stricter. So it sounds like to me, we should definitely be choosing the $10 million, it sounds like that's what the mayor thinks, because then that $10 million is pretty wide open. No, so the $10 million is the standard allowance, so then that three...
Up to $10. You don't have to take that, up to $10.
Why would we, why would we take less? I don't...
Why would you take any?
So the, so you have to choose, this is my understanding, and the law department can correct me if I'm wrong. You have to choose the standard allowance or the revenue loss. So they put this in the final rule to make it easier for towns that didn't want to calculate the revenue loss or didn't want to, you know, to go down that road, to say, "Look, if you take the $10 million standard allowance, or up to $10 million standard allowance, you can basically use that on a very wide array of options." But some towns maybe had more than $10 million in revenue loss. Maybe a town that got $40 million in ARPA funds had a $20 million loss. So they would rather use the $20 million than the 10. Now, in our case, it sounds like luckily our revenue loss was lower, so we would want to take the 10 so that we have a much wider use of the funds. That's my understanding. I don't know if the law department wants to correct me or if we want to wait for another time, but that's my understanding of it. Mr. Mayor, is that how you understand it also, or...
What you said right there at the end, I agree. We're estimating it's, it's under $2 million as a revenue loss, and it's up to 10 that you can be a standard. Why they have broadened this, when you got into that, I'm not sure I agree with all of that, but whatever their rationale is, is the nearest I can understand, I believe the law department, that's the option.
So I would, I mean, I guess at this point, I, I might suggest, maybe next Tuesday, instead of our, it could still be the special meeting, but maybe we have the entire council so that we can just make a decision on this. Maybe we can invite the law department, maybe we can see if the consultant has anything that he would like to submit beforehand. I think it might be good to have the entire council in at this point to make this decision. I don't know how everyone else feels about that, but I think we need to, it sounds like we maybe need to get some more clarification on this and, and make this decision. And like, like was stated before, once we make this decision, that's it, you can't go back. It's very clear in the rule that you cannot change that. So I think we want to make sure we know what we're doing before we make that decision. So I would like to get everyone's thoughts on that, if maybe we have the whole council next Tuesday.
I'm not sure it's necessary. We have till the end of April, and we have two regular meetings between now and then. That's just my thought. But I do have a question. The way Counselor Tatta explained it is that this is a binary decision. Either we are deciding to set aside the revenue loss amount, or we're setting aside $10 million, and what I read in your memo is that it's up to $10 million.
It's up to $10 million.
So it doesn't have to be $10 million, it could be some number less?
Correct.
Okay.
But once you set the amount, you can't, and the date goes by, you can't change it.
Thank you. Counselor Zandry?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a lot of commentary right now because between the introduction and Counselor Tatta, most of it was mentioned, but I have a question, maybe for all of us. If we, we motioned 40% and 30%, left 30% on the table, we're talking about a three, a potential of 3.9 million for the town. That's all that's left unless we're planning to overturn what we just did. Am I not following that math correctly?
I think the idea was that if the need came in, in either of the other categories higher than the 40 or 30%, that more could be allocated of that...
Right, that's what, that's the action that we took.
Yeah.
But, but there's been zero discussion about allocating anything for the town.
Correct.
So the $2 million or up to the $10 million, the only place that could come from right now is the remaining 3.9, unless we're going to undo our motion, no?
No, that, that was a committee recommendation.
That's a recommendation, yeah.
That's not binding on the council.
All right, okay, so we recommended that, the council hasn't voted on that yet, so we could still change that, okay. I wanted to make sure I was following that because I'm sitting there going, wait, the rest of the math didn't work. So we have to wait upon a decision by us up here, full body, before it gets locked in. Okay. That was it, thank you.
Counselor Testa?
Mr. Farrell, when they refer to $2 million revenue loss, or a revenue loss, we identify $2 million, let's say, does the document specify that you literally have to use it to reimburse yourself for revenue loss? Or does that just allow you to put a number out where you can now use that $2 million for anything in the community?
My understanding is it's actually revenue loss.
Okay. So I hope everyone's hearing that there is discussion and commentary and recommendations that are suggesting we're considering reimbursing the town for revenue loss with some of this money and/or probably coming up with a number in the other category of up to $10 million to use for anything. So, but we haven't ever had the discussion that we thought any of that is a worthwhile priority right now. We've never said, "Let's reimburse the town for its revenue loss." We never once said that. That's probably last on my list of priorities. Okay? You know where we reimburse us for revenue loss? In our general fund reserve. That's where we reimburse ourselves for revenue loss. It's not the easiest thing to do, but we do that. If we had to decide, we have to decide in principle, do we want to spend any money on community projects? And if so, how much? We thought we had time to make that decision. We really don't. We can't wait till we hear what everyone else needs first, because we're not going to have it in three weeks. So I will wait for the law department to come back and say, "Well, you know what? In that up to $10 million thing, the standard allowance, you actually can potentially reimburse social services, for example, because it says government services. Maybe that, you know, we, we fund youth social services. We, maybe that's a, maybe that's a loophole, and I don't want to say loophole, but it's legitimate. Maybe, all right? Certainly nothing to do with businesses would fall into that category, all right? I couldn't see that. But if you consider government services, part of government services giving to the community, giving to social service agencies, then maybe you can get away with it. I'm skeptical, but I'll wait to hear the answer. My belief is that this standard allowance they're talking about is government services. And we've been talking about those, well, either we want to reimburse ourselves for money we've lost, or spend it on what the town does, or putting it into projects in the community. Okay? We've got to, we've got to grapple with that deeply, almost before we do anything else. Because that, there's a deadline on. And I think we need to just, we start, we should all start thinking about that, because that's on the table. Right now, everything else is on hold. Because we're going to start getting the applications in. We could start. So there's no reason to commit anything to anybody else till we know what the heck we're going to do with this. Because once we make a decision on this, there's no going back.
Counselor Tatta?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I could certainly be wrong, but based on my reading, I, Counselor Testa, I don't, I don't believe it's exactly how you're understanding it. I, I don't think the revenue loss needs, means that you need to reimburse the town for the revenue loss. I think it's simply a formula. So you either take the standard allowance or you take the revenue loss. And then based on which one you choose, there's lists of what is allowed under each. So in all of the, the final rule, I think we got, you know, several weeks ago, a month ago, from the law department, and then the CCM toolkit, they list out, if you take the standard deduction, you can spend it on this, 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 this. If you use the revenue loss formula, you can spend it on this, this, this. And the revenue loss formula is much more limited. Again, I could certainly be wrong, but that's my understanding of it. So I don't think it's necessarily that you, if you take the revenue loss formula, you need to reimburse the town for that. I think it's just which formula you choose. And then there's allowable items under each. So my understanding was, in our, you know, in our case, if our revenue loss was less than $2 million, the standard allowance formula is, gives you much more leverage as to what you can use it on, so it would probably behoove us to do that. But again, I, you know, I could certainly be reading that wrong, and so I, but that's my understanding. So again, I think it would be good, I mean, certainly the law department can, you know, issue another opinion tomorrow, which is great, but I think it's, I think maybe it's time we bring the consultant back. You know, he's very knowledgeable on, on these things, and I think it could be a, this might be time to maybe bring him back and make sure we're headed in the right direction before we make a decision that we're either unclear of or we don't realize what the ramifications are, and then we can't undo it. So I'm so supportive of maybe meeting with, with the consultant at this meeting or the, I'm sorry, at the next, our next special meeting or the next full council meeting, but certainly before we make the decision on which formula we're going to use. Thank you.
Anyone else on the council? There being none, comment from the public? Mr. Gross? You already talked about this like 20 minutes ago.
No, but Bob Gross Long Hill wrote, but I'm very confused. Because, Mr. Mayor, you're saying our revenue loss is $2 million? How do you calculate that?
Mayor, the question was, how do we calculate a revenue loss of less than $2 million?
I don't know that it was, this was an estimate based upon what the comptroller felt was the impact in the, in the last year as far as reduction in revenues. Didn't follow the formula and do all of that analysis. Certainly, we'd need the consultant to help us with that, but that was the estimate.
Okay, what is, anybody up there can tell me what the budget was for the year 2018, Have an idea, $160 million? $70 million?
It was somewhere between 160 and 170.
We'll say 160, we'll say 165. And this is, I'm, I'm really astonished at, there's two options on this, and I'm just totally astonished because Counselor Todd has been asking for this a long time, and you would think that somebody would have gotten this information by now. 7.6 million. 6.7 million is the actual loss, if you do it according to the rules that ARPA, that the government has set up. I could be wrong, but I'm, that's the way I'm reading it. What it's done is, you take the year of 2018, 19, your last fiscal year before the pandemic hit, and from there, you can, are allowed to take 4.1% calculated out, that's your revenue loss, or your actual revenue loss. There's two options. That's basic. You have a, you have a consultant. You guys have been talking about, and I know I have, and Counselor Testa and Counselor Tatta have been talking about this for so long, and not to know the basic rules. And we're in March already. It's astonishing, because you're talking a ton of money sitting here on the table and not knowing what to do with it. You should get those applications out tomorrow. You should have an idea from the businesses already of how much that you, that they think they're going to need and allocate somewhere close to that range. You're never going to be able to, you can't overestimate though. And I don't know how you're going to do, the only thing you can overestimate is for the town, because we can do projects. You can pick those projects and you can do the money. And that's why most towns are taking that 10 million off the table, right off the bat. It's easy. And if you want to give additional monies to businesses or not-for-profits after, you take the 10 million, you put one and a half, one and a half, 50/50, whatever way you do it. And if they need more money, then take it out, take it out of your own budget. Somebody was just mentioning you have the, I don't, I call it the rainy day fund, but the surplus. Take a couple million out of there if you want to help the businesses and not-for-profits at that point. At least you're guaranteeing you're using all the money that's coming in to the town of Wallingford and not losing any of it. You leave stuff on the table, the government's going to take it back, and then where are you going to be? Thank you.
All right. Counselor Tatta.
Thank you. I guess I'll just make a formal motion then. I'll make a motion that we invite the consultant to the next regularly scheduled town council meeting for the purpose of discussing ARPA funds.
We can, we can invite him without a motion.
Okay, just want to make sure it happens.
Well, Mayor, can we invite the consultant to the next regular meeting, please?
Sure, we can.
Thank you.
Okay, I will withdraw my motion. Thank you.
All right. There being no further business on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.